Requires a meeting a month and a few hours of investigation and, and questions from the community and really appreciate your volunteer effort and the asset you've been, besides your, your viewpoint on many subjects. I think it, it credits this commission very well, the, some of the diversity we have. So, thank you very much, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Yep. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We've, I, we didn't have minutes this time, or at least I didn't see them, so it's all right with the commissioners. I like to just table our minutes for next month. Is that okay?
Good.
Okay.
Wow.
We'll go ahead and get started with the first topic, or the first item is a zone change. It's a public hearing. And I'll ask Dave if he'll present this.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We talked a little bit about this particular site in your meeting last month, so I'm going to be really brief. We talked about a couple of different options that we could use to simply make a particular building fit better on the property. The direction we got from you was to initiate the zone change that's on your agenda tonight, and we've worked with the applicant to do that. He's applied to have the zoning changed from commercial two to commercial office. The subject property is adjacent to Carl's Jr. That's the best way for me to describe it, right here. There was a home on it until, I believe, last summer. That's gone now. And the Development Review Committee has reviewed the proposal and has recommended that it be approved.
Okay. Do we have the applicant here tonight? I don't see the applicant. Okay. Does the commissioner have any questions for Dave before we go into a public hearing? I'll hold for that. Okay. We're going to go ahead and go into a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions or comment about this, please do so. With the public hearing portion, we'll just ask you to introduce yourself as you approach the mic. And we're going to have two or three public hearings during this meeting, so if we can just have a theme of offering everybody one opportunity to come up. If we can abstain from reoccurring topics, it'll help speed that along as well. But we do want to hear from the public with any concerns. Is there anybody that has any comments on this particular zone change? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And again, planning commissioner, is any questions for Dave on this that we don't already understand from the information? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Make a motion. We recommend to City Council, zone change for the Nick Dart property from C2 to CO.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Euler.
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Argal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Zoning passes. We'll move on to the second item. This is a preliminary plat and zone change. Is that right, Brandon?
Uh, no, this is another zone change, southwest part of town. Evans Zone Change is what we have it listed as.
Okay, Leslie Evans, yes.
So what we've got here. Arrowhead Highway, southwest part of town. We've got the Benjamin interchange off the screen here. This is the property that we're looking at. It's currently in our RR zone, our rural residential zone, which in the past has been utilized as a holding zone. And so if there's development potential on a property, but we want to wait until we see a project come before us, we generally utilize that zone. The property that we're looking at is just over ten, ten acres. This is a concept that she provided. This hasn't been through a staff review. And so when she does come in for a subdivision plat, it would be scrutinized at that point, probably some changes that would need to be made, as well as looking at some of these key issues here. One, one key point to, to bring to your attention is the general plan is already consistent. It's already in place. It's a state density residential and the corresponding zone is the R115, which she's requesting. And so staff doesn't have a concern with that. The third item that's listed here is the ability to serve the development of the subject property. And so Engineering and Public Works has been working with the applicant as far as making sure that utilities and other services will be available. It may delay the development for a little bit, but that is something that's in process. And so if you look at the, the recommendation that was provided by the DRC, there is the finding that it's consistent with the general plan, and then there is the condition. One thing that is needed at this point is an easement for power improvements along Arrowhead. And so the DRC did recommend, passed that recommendation on for you to consider. Any questions on this item?
Got one question. I know, for this whole area in general, we've talked about needing or possibly needing a lift station that was going to take place with the Sun Rock development. What's the status on that? And is that still needed for this to move along?
No, it's not neither. Sewer right across the, the street preferred would be once the lift station's completed, the sewer would flow to the, the lift station. It was planned to happen here than now, but the property, it was going through. They had to change the part of what they were doing with it. The Sun Rock property, a little bit more delayed, but obviously still planned to happen.
So can this be developed before that lift station is completed?
Potentially, but I think practically speaking, water and power most likely will be extended to this area with the construction of a lift station. That's kind of how I see it. So I, I think in all likelihood, this property won't, you won't see a development here until we have that lift station in place. Which incidentally is not the...
All the utilities aren't close.
I don't see the applicant...
Not close?
No.
Okay.
I don't see the applicant here tonight, but in the past, she hasn't indicated a desire to develop immediately.
I'm also here to support it, so I'm...
Oh.
One other question that I see here. It appears from the picture that we have here that the only access into this property at this time is going to be from Arrowhead Trail. Is that correct?
Have we looked that closely?
That is correct.
Spacing and...
I know that that's not...
If we had that intersection, it couldn't be anywhere else.
Right.
lining up with the existing...
UDOT frequently changes the category if that road is more developed than, than happens. The recent one, you're hundreds of feet, maybe up to a thousand feet between certain intersections. So, and they have to line up with ones across the street. So that's the only place it can go is right there.
Sure.
Now, if the neighbor next door had developed first, and they had one, an access on their west end, they probably wouldn't get that access or, it'd be a little more restricted. They're the first one, so it's, it's a little bit easier to find that access point.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'd like your recommendation for an easement for power, but why not just all utilities be included in an easement? Why just limited to power?
I'm assuming that most of the utilities are going to end up in the road right of way, but the power, this one in particular, was going to be back behind where the edge of the right of way would be. And so maybe if you can speak to it, Mike, I think it was going to be further into the property. And so that way, that was the desire for power to get that easement.
And if I can even maybe add, I mean, oftentimes, power is installed in a public utility easement. So I think in all likelihood, we typically don't specify, I think to your point. So I believe the idea would be to have maybe, I don't know exactly what it would be, for example, maybe 20 feet of space adjacent to Arrowhead that would be identified as...
Just call it utility easement?
You could call it municipal utility easement.
Yeah.
That way, it's whatever we decide we want to put in there.
Yeah.
Good. That's all my questions, Commissioner.
At this point, it's just a zone change. They would still have to bring up future planned site with all of the easement layouts and everything else down the road that we voted on again, correct?
Yep.
This is just a zone change. This is the most detail we've, we've seen. It's just kind of layout of the lots. Where is the road generally going to be, size of lots? So...
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Brandon.
Go ahead and open up for public comments in public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this point? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the, the public hearing. Just to confirm, is the applicant here?
She's on her way.
Okay. Okay. We may not need her. We'd just like to give them a chance to speak if they, if they, if they have anything to say. Commissioners, any other questions?
No.
Any idea for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the change, the zone change request from RR to R115.
Then do you want to include the findings and the conditions as noted?
As noted in the recommendations of staff.
Okay. We got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the zone change approves? All right. Dave, you're up.
But only for a second?
This is the cottages on the fourth, right?
You have an annoying sound.
All righty. The next item for you is a zone change with an infill overlay request as well as a preliminary plat. And so we do have the actual plans set for you to review. And I think we're three for three with no applicants. I'm missing, that's interesting.
Yeah.
We can change the date.
And the time.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So as far as orientation, we're looking at Fourth East and Fourth North. We've got the area outlined in red. Currently, we're in an R16 zone. The applicant is looking to rezone that property to R3. And then to accommodate the proposed development that I'll show in just a second, he is requesting the infill overlay be applied to the property as well, which would allow for a proposed 10-unit preliminary plat, which we've got here. So once again, we've got Fourth East here on the left side of the screen. We'd have two structures. One would have six row houses, and the front doors would front onto Fourth East, and then they'd have a rear entry double car garage. And then the second building is kind of tucked back behind that. It'll only have four units. As you can see, the front doors, we've got a walkway, and then it opens onto a landscape, a courtyard area, kind of a playground area. There is some additional parking for visitors and guests, as well as any parking that could be accommodated for guests on the street. And then once again, these are rear loaded. They would also have two car garages. I believe we've got some additional information for you. So this is a rendering of what you might see as far as the colors. We do have some actual plans as far as materials and how it would look. The infill is exactly that. It's intended for projects that would fit nicely into the existing neighborhood. So what we've got here, you can kind of see it steps up to the middle. The middle is the highest peak. It's still below what is the maximum that's allowed per the zone as far as height. We did provide, these are from the applicant's architect, we did provide both ends as well as the rear, so you can see those. We, as you can see, we've got some, some nice porches that would extend off of the front. Just a little attention to the ends. So you've got the hard, the hardy board siding, excuse me, in, in both the horizontal application as well as the vertical. Nice trim on the windows. And then this kind of shows the, the relief as far as the porch extensions on each of the units. Wonderful job as far as architectural design with the pitches and layout and whatnot. This building here is the rear. So once again, it's got the four units, very similar look and feel, just reduced in, in size, obviously. Next up, sorry to keep showing you, we've got, this is the last one, and then we've got a few discussion points. But this is the landscape plan. And so with the infill overlay, there is quite a bit of criteria that the applicant has to comply with, namely, the architecture, the materials, the look and feel. Landscaping is also another important factor that's looked at, parking. And so this right here shows the landscaping. So what we generally look at is we've got an overall site percentage. We then have street frontage landscaping. And so in this case, we've got a wonderful park strip with some trees, both on, on both sides of the sidewalk, excuse me. Then, and then what we also require is anytime you're adjacent to something that may be lower density or a different use, we then have a transition landscaping requirement. And so what we've got is a 10-foot buffer that goes around the edge of the property. So then once again, you see the trees, as well as this masonry wall that's shown here. And so that kind of gives an opportunity for, for those trees to grow and provide some screening and, and privacy and whatnot for the adjoining properties.
Brandon, is that the type of wall then, is masonry or...
Yes.
And what's the height on that?
Six feet.
Okay.
And so some of the key issues that we look at, and we did have, Dave and I did have a chance to speak with Commissioner Davis, who is not here with us tonight. His concern, and maybe I'll jump back to the previous slide, is with the infill, you can make adjustments and have those approved as far as the placement of the buildings and so on, that the applicant is looking at. And in my opinion, it's kind of a combination of both an adjustment, but also an accommodation of just an interesting layout of, of the property line. Generally, you measure your setbacks from the property line, and then your, your structure setback accordingly. This one's got the park strip, which I believe, I want to say it was eight feet. And we've got the sidewalk, but then we have three more feet before it actually hits the property line. And so it's kind of a, an odd arrangement. His concern was just wanting to make sure that we had adequate area between the street itself and the units. And so going off of the plans and, and took a few measurements. So the living, living area, let me just grab my notes so I can read these to you while you look at an image. So if we use this one, for instance, or actually, let's go back to this one here. So this one kind of, it's a little cleaner in the sense that we don't have the landscaping that we're focusing on out front. But you can see, the dark line is outline of the actual bill, the building, the living area. And then off the front, you see the, the porch extensions. And then each porch has its own concrete sidewalk that then connects into the city sidewalk. And so the measurements that we took is to the property line, which is roughly about three feet behind the back of the sidewalk, you've got 13 feet to the living, 16 feet from the back of walk to the living, and then 28 feet from the back of the curb to the living itself. And then if we take into consideration the porch extensions, we've got from the property line, six feet, from the back of the sidewalk, 10 feet, and then from the back of the curb, we've got 21 feet. And so he just wanted to, to voice his opinion as far as making sure that we brought that to everyone's attention and just kind of walk, walk that, walk through that with you. And so we've kind of highlighted the, the density, the landscaping, the architecture. There is quite a bit of work that's being done with the utilities and infrastructure, mainly with, with power. There's going to be some modifications to the existing power layout to accommodate the placement of the buildings, as you see them here. And then the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting to collect feedback and input. And so I assume that we do have some that are here tonight to...
Okay.
Any questions for staff?
Brandon, just the detail you spent on the distance from the setbacks. Does that all meet the requirements, or is this deviating from that?
Deviating slightly. So if you, let me grab it one more time, sorry. So our standard, this is just the base for the zone, before we take into consideration the infill.
Right.
The base is 15 feet from the property line to the porch, and 20 feet from the property line to the living quarters. And if I remember correctly, Mike, on the street cross-section, for this road, or for residential road, generally, we've got the curb gutter and then eight feet, and then a five foot...
Five foot walk.
So then in this one, we have the additional three feet behind, generally, the property line's at the back of the sidewalk. In this case, where it's an older part of town, I can only assume that it has to deal with the historic plat of the city being laid out. But what we ended up with was an additional three feet.
So, so we have more, we have more setback, or less?
So let me double check my math. So we've got...
It's not what?
So we've got 13 plus three, so we've got 16.
Instead of...
But the only accommodation that we'd be making is recognizing that the property line is not at the walk it's in further. And so if we're looking purely from back of sidewalk, we're actually gaining a foot.
Okay.
But if we're looking at where is the actual property line, then we're losing two feet.
Okay.
Where are we supposed to go from?
Generally, the back of the sidewalk is where property line occurs.
And generally, it should be 20 feet from the sidewalk to the living space?
Yes, 20 from the back of sidewalk where the property line usually lies, 20. Yeah.
And this, from the sidewalk to the livable area, the living area, is 18? Is that right?
Uh, 16.
That's what you said. 16.
And there's 28 to the curb.
So, okay, so, uh, so there is a four-foot difference here, that he's asking for a waiver of that 20 to go down to 16.
And we can do that with the infill overlay?
You may, yes.
That brings me to my next question. Does this fit within our general plan for infill overlays?
And so that's why it's an overlay. And so he's requesting the rezone, which is one thing that coordinates with...
No, what I mean is if we look at the general plan, does it fit in the area that we have in the general plan for infill overlays?
With the infill, we're supposed to take more consideration with the immediate adjacent neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so it can be applied to a very large area. But one of the main criteria of the infill is, are we doing more good or harm in allowing the additional density? And so the applicant, what we've kind of talked through with him as far as the need for it coming up closer, we've got the parking that he's trying to accommodate as far as, as adequate backup area. But then to help soften it and to help kind of present it better to the street, we've got the additional row of trees that he's opted to put in, as well as, as the landscaping. And then, once again, we've got, oh, wrong way. We've got the, the look and feel that he's put into the design itself.
Could you go back to the, the street view from up above?
Street view.
And see how much further this sticks out towards the street than the adjacent homes? So it'd only be one on the corner of Fourth North and one on the corner of Third?
Yeah.
And maybe while we switch over to take a look at the street view, I think I would just add, Commissioner Argal, to your question about consistency with the general plan, I think it is consistent. At the same time, I think there probably is some reason to maybe look at the little bit bigger picture the next time we, we do maybe like a citywide update. It might be a matter of looking at the whole corridor along Fourth North, you know, maybe down to a certain depth, block north or block south, something like that. And that's just relative to the R3 zone, and where you might, or might not feel comfortable having that approved. But we have approved other projects that are, that are approaching the same density in the same medium density general plan designation before. So like Brandon was saying, I think it's consistent with, with what we've done before with the general plan.
Okay. Good. So general plan, we've got high-density residential, we've got medium-density residential, we've got low-density residential. Does that sound like the right categories? So is an R3 high-density residential?
It's one that would fit right between the medium and the high.
And an R16 would be considered medium?
Uh, medium. Yep.
So this is, so look, there we go. So that's exactly what we're looking for. So if we look at the property, which is right here, so all of this is designated R16, and it looks like this is, or in the general plan, is designated medium density. This is designated high density. So just maybe a block away in the general plan...
And you can see...
Was designated high density, which would be kind of consistent, but not, not entirely.
And not to maybe try to be too strong in making a case, but just relative to how we've handled other infill, excuse me, infill projects before, we've approved that kind of density before in the medium density, for the same reasons that Brandon kind of outlined, where with the infill, we're really looking at more of the immediate impact on adjacent properties versus kind of the bigger. But like I said, as well, I think there's some reason to believe that, that we should maybe plan for some additional density along corridors like Fourth North over time. We've seen that, you know, for example, with the Reese Apartments project and, and some things like that. So there's probably some merit to that.
Okay.
This zone here that has been, that has been used, the infill overlay has been used for, what is, what is that? What, is that some apartments?
That was to build a duplex specifically there.
A duplex?
Build a duplex on a property that already had a fourplex. So there, you know, we were getting to a similar kind of density. Some of you guys remember Paul Casey?
Yep.
That was the one.
So if we can zoom back to the area, I think there was a question as far as placement of the surrounding homes.
Yeah, the, the question that I had was how it aligns with the other properties here as far as setback goes. These two, these two homes will obv- These two, these two homes will obviously be gone. And so how does, how does the setback look in relation to this home on the corner and this home on the corner?
So Mike is going to pull that up so you can see it's 20 or 15.
Are we close or are we?
21 to the.
It seems as we go up and down streets, it seems like homes are, usually have about the same setback, and that's kind of a pleasing thing in most cases. Kind of hard to tell, isn't it?
Pretty good with that, Mike, I gotta say.
I'm, I'm pretty impressed.
Plus or minus five feet, right?
Hand your nades.
So while he's working on that, I've got another question about.
So I guess one last comment on this.
Go ahead.
And we'll jump into your question. So when you look at the insiduous section, there are some that are shallows that must be met, but the way it reads for the setbacks is variations in setbacks may be considered on a case by case basis. And so.
Very good.
There may be some parts of town where we would want to strongly consider maybe the height or the scale of the massing and the setback of adjoining structures, but in this, in this instance, you do have some, some latitude as far as consideration. Sorry, Commissioner Oiler.
So along with the design and the height of the buildings, there's a power pole that's right here. What's going to happen there?
And that one, I believe, would remain, is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
So if you add, oh, no, one out along the street, this one here. Because I thought.
Unless it's just going to cross the street here.
It's just going to cross the street, if I understand.
So get buried on the property level and then come up and go across the street? Is that how that works?
Uh, the applicant corrected us if we have that wrong, but that's mine.
Yeah, we'll go around the property and go up that pole.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, this pole's going away and these feet will be rerouted up along the north property line. And then this one, I believe, will remain, and then this main one will go around.
So when something like that happens, any of the digging of the trenches or whatever to bury that stays on the property, you won't infringe at all in any way on neighboring properties?
Okay. Would you have the applicant here with us now? Any questions for the applicant?
I think we might save the applicant for after the public hearing. That's okay. That way he could maybe address some of the concerns that the citizens might have. Commissioner, is okay with going to the public hearing now?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into a public hearing for those that might want to come up and comment, and then we'll have the applicant speak after that. Is there anyone that wants to speak?
Sorry, Brad, is that a conversation back there, what?
Public hearing.
Remember what happened in school when that happened?
Yeah.
We're going to let the, the public speak on this first and then ask the applicant yourself to come up and talk.
Okay.
Okay. Got a lot of people in here. Maybe they're saving it for the last subject.
Wow.
If there's no one to talk about any issues on this from the public on this issue, we're going to close the public hearing and then.
Just a clarification on the power pole.
We're going to have to have you come up and introduce yourself and we've got Channel 17 recording, so we have to, we have to have the public be able to hear you.
Bruce Johnson, and I, I just wanted a clarification as far as where that center pole's going to be and how the existing homes are going to be reconnected.
With the power.
Whether it be underground, overhead, or what has to take place there.
Okay.
And I, it looks like you've got a plan there to explain that, so.
It's a good question.
My question.
And you live to the north?
What's that?
You live to the north of this property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think John is going to kind of walk us through the plans that Mike has pulled up so you can kind of visualize and show you modifications.
Okay, so we'll have John talk about that. If there's no, is there no other public comment?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll close the, the public hearing portion of it, and John will ask you to answer that question about the power.
Okay.
Okay, when, when we were in DRC, we, we, we talked about, and, and the, the power company, power department talked about burying it, burying this line, and it'll be buried here, here to here, and then continued on this way. The, the pole that is currently somewhere right in this area will, will, if it's not on the property line, will be moved to the property line, and, and then the, the power that's, that's currently going to these three houses is going to come right here to here to this pole that's somewhere right here, go back up the pole, and continue to be overhead to those three houses.
So exactly where is that?
The, the, the power pole right now is somewhere.
So it's the, the little tiny pole they're talking about?
Yes, yes.
And they go back up it?
Right. It'll go right back up that and continue on to overhead to the, to your house.
So when that happens, how, how are the homes affected? I mean, is the power switched off for a couple of minutes while they switch it, or is it out for a few hours? Any idea?
That's beyond my pay grade. I don't know.
Wondering how this will affect the, the homeowners when they do make that switch?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't know what, what kind of a timeframe there is on that. I, I don't know that. Yes.
There's a little pole.
Thanks.
I think I'm fine going on record saying that I doubt our power company would want to purposely inconvenience any of the residential Spanish Forks in this area as far as the project moving forward. But we can definitely reach out to them tomorrow and kind of get a better understanding of how they do that, so in the future, we can give you.
Yeah. And as proactive as the power division is, I would think if there's any improvements, this would be a good time to do that, if any of them poles need to be replaced or heightened or relocated. So we got the applicant here. We can, we can beat him up. I mean, let's, let's not be too easy on this guy.
I think it'll start at 5:30. I'm so sorry, sorry to come in late.
I do have one question for the applicant as we look at this. I couldn't tell from the front elevations, is there any masonry on the front of these or are they all hardy board on the front as well as the sides and back?
Um, let's see.
I, I just couldn't tell.
We've got.
I assume that there's some.
Hold on, I can pull this.
We can zoom in half.
We've got elevations, John.
Yeah, I saw the elevations, but I couldn't tell underneath those porches. I would imagine that's where.
There's some stone, most of it is just by the hill. Okay. Yeah, most of it's side, oh, oh, yeah, there's a little bit of.
Looks like a little stone to the side of each door, and that's all.
But yeah, but mostly, yeah, what we've also done is, is done most of our character with, with, with breaking up that front elevation and, and windows and different gables and stuff. Yep.
The first floor. The first floor. The fourth floor. Yeah. So here you can see what it's referring to, how the entryway is reset. You've got this bay windows that pop out with the porch that comes out.
Yeah, that one side elevation does a good job of showing how them porches are staggered as well.
Yes.
If he was coming down the street, you could see him stepping back and forth.
Right.
Yes, that view right there on the left.
And there will be color variations.
Yeah. Do, um, do you remember the renderings that I, that I showed you last time I was here? That, that we have four different colors across the si, across that sixplex? I think that's right. Yeah, I think it has four different colors across that sixplex.
So there was a playground, I think, on the first version you had in the backyard, it seemed like. Is that going to be part of this? I didn't see it there.
Um, we had, we had talked about that. We've, we've done different things and talking with the staff and, and things. We took the playground off and put, and, and put our money into that front elevation with several different, we added some windows and added one, well, a, a front gable on every one, on, on every one of the front elevations.
What's going to be in that big square? Is that his lawn then?
Um, right, yeah. Just some, some, some trees and, and grass.
Okay.
A race track.
Yeah, a race track.
But maybe just, okay, like you discussing, John showed some things in previous plans, and in all candor, I think I'm the one that suggested, you know, for a project with this number of units, it might make just as much sense to provide some space rather than, you know, because sometimes we see little pavilions with some seating areas, picnic tables and that kind of a thing. I won't speak for John, but I suspect he's very willing to talk about adding some of those kinds of types of things. I think it's really just a matter of what, with that limited space, you think is.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just the sod is, is just as good.
Yeah. So I guess along with that, these are going to be rental units rather than owned? Or are they going to be owned?
Well, I, I, I'm going to own some of them, and, and, but, but, you know, eventually they'll be up for sale. You know, whether an investor comes, you know, I mean, I know you turn down any offers.
Right.
So.
Sure.
But, but, yeah, I, I, I'll own some of them, yes.
Two car garage on each unit? So for the property, you average about two point something, just over two per, per unit?
Six, just over two and a half.
Just over two and a half. And that's typical with townhome developments. Any idea what our aver, it's a little under?
Yeah, it exceeds our minimum by.
Oh, exceeds it by just a little bit? Okay.
Um, and.
I guess you've got street parking as well?
I think that's very reasonable to account for here relative to meeting our minimum. It doesn't count. But in all honesty, if I live in any of those units, one through six, at least part of the day, I'm going to park right in front of my unit as that's available. I think that would, that would be highly appreciated in years.
That wide of a street, you could go 45 degree angle parking? Probably too, probably too deep.
90 degree, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Wait till you make it a five lane road.
Well, Commissioner, we've had a few questions. Is there any concerns or other questions you have? Otherwise, we could entertain a, a motion.
So on this one, sorry to interrupt, we, you could, it'd be appropriate to either do one motion to address both the rezone and the infill with the preliminary plat, or if you're more comfortable doing two separate motions, that'd be appropriate as well.
Okay, either way. And they're both recommendations to the city council, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
I would make a recommendation that we, that we recommend the zone change of the property from R16 to R3. If you would like, I'll make the motion on the rest of it. And I'll make the motion that we recommend to the city council that the zone change be approved and that the preliminary plat be approved based on the conditions that are set forth by staff.
Well, we have the infill overlay as well.
Yes, and the infill overlay.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. John, I'd like to just say and compliment you on this project because you've really followed the spirit of what this planning commission has been concerned about in the last six to 12 months is the overhaul of appearance, the architecture, the breaking it up with colors and, and, and something that looks nice. And I, I appreciate you coming in and getting our input and putting it on paper and.
You guys, yeah, you guys gave me that, those marching orders and.
Yep.
Went into it.
Where are you going to build your underground parking?
I'm still looking for it. I'm still looking for it.
I was thinking, you start with underground parking, 19 units, don't you?
I thought that was good. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Appreciate your creativity. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
That's awesome.
Okay, this is the last item, isn't it, Dave?
It is, yeah. Um, this is a proposed general plan amendment, and hopefully.
We can leave it right there for a minute.
I'm going to have to do it the hard way. Just take me a second. The hard way shouldn't be hard, but for some reason with my mouse here, it's really The subject property that we're going to talk about is out near Maple Mountain High You know what, Mike? I might just ask you to help me get.
Oh, there it is.
Did it come that way? Great. Okay, never mind. Go back on here. We've talked about this property a couple of different times in recent months. Again, it's out in the vicinity of Maple Mountain High School to the south and east on the east side of Spanish Fork Parkway. So this is the Edge Homes subdivision here. US Highway 6 is about a half a mile to the south, and there's one property, I believe, between the subject property and First South. First South is the street that's immediately adjacent to Maple Mountain High School on the south side. So given what we anticipate Spanish Fork Parkway to be someday and how I think Spanish Fork, I'm sorry, how I think, or let's say we think First South's probably going to change over time, it's probably going to be a pretty significant intersection there and right adjacent to the high school at some point in time. Currently, this property being on the east side of Spanish Fork Parkway is designated for our estate residential type of development. That's a designation that has only been around for a couple of years. We've employed it on properties that are east of 2550 East, on a couple of properties that are sort of above the river bottoms. You can picture the Vincent Ridge Estate subdivision and property that's east of that. And then also, we have this designation in the Leland area out. In fact, we looked at the zone change earlier tonight, the Leslie Evans Zone Change that has that estate residential designation. So that's just a little bit of background relative to where that designation is found in the community. You're, I think, for the most part, all aware. Commissioner Argyle's a little bit newer to the commission, but we've had considerable discussion in the past, going back, in fact, in some cases, for a really long time about the idea that we need to have some areas in the community that are set aside for larger lots, in particular, lots that are a little bit wider, lots that can accommodate a little bit easier, a third or maybe even a fourth car garage, space for some of the things that are pretty common in the community, things like that fifth wheel or toy hauler and that sort of a thing. And that, that's largely what this designation was created to ultimately provide for, at least that's the concept. The applicant's proposal is to change that to the medium density residential designation, and they've given us some plans that are included in the staff report, and I'll touch on those here in just a second. And I'll just mention this right out of the gate. From my perspective, I believe what the applicants are proposing likely would be a very, very nice development. It certainly could fit in with the kind of development that we've anticipated to have happen on the east side of 2550 East. Now, that being said, staff's recommendation to deny the proposed general plan amendment really ties very directly to direction that we've heard from the planning commission relative to the idea that you simply want to see lower density types of development in this particular area. So to that extent, before maybe I touch on the specific plans, I would just say that if you're inclined to perhaps recommend that this proposal be approved. if you're inclined to perhaps recommend that this proposal be approved, I'd simply ask that maybe you give us as staff to your next meeting to look at a little bit broader area to consider with the general plan amendment, simply given that I think it probably, relative to just kind of land use planning relationships and what we would really anticipate happening to the north if this change gets approved, it makes the best sense to look at it more broadly. That being said, this is the concept plan that the applicants have provided. This is kind of right on the border of either requiring R16 or R3 zoning. Where they're at right now, I think they could do it as a master plan development in the R16 zone. I'll let the applicants describe the particular design and some of its attributes more than I will, but it's my understanding simply that this would certainly have some similarities to the project that we've used a lot of times as an example, so I'll use it again tonight in Springville, kind of that four-unit-per-building kind of a design, main floor living, they really aimed it, and maybe a little bit older demographic and that sort of a thing. And we've certainly seen some projects like that that we think are great. So, those are the elevations that the applicants provided, and you have that in the staff report as well. And if you don't have any questions for me, I think it's probably best to let the applicant maybe describe his project in more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, come on up and tell us more about your project.
All right, my name's Greg Byrd, represent the owners of the property here, and thank you, Dave. First, I wanted, I apologize, there's just a couple sheets I wanted to send to you, but I wanna get in this packet and I missed the deadline, so I brought it. But the Utah Housing Initiative, which was done by most of the state, the state of Utah, state agencies on elderly populations, specifically the Utah Department of Human Services. So they all got together and they were trying to figure out what to do with the baby boomer generation. And there's a couple key facts, and it'll, just very quickly, I'll be able to tie it all back, but it says Utah has the sixth fastest-growing rate in the nation for people of sixty-five or older. It says it will grow by twenty-seven percent, actually, actually by forty-eight percent by 2010. Sixty-five and older population will grow one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred people, fifty-one percent from 2010 to 2020, which is really where we're at. It says one person will turn sixty-five years every twenty-three minutes in 2015. And it says by 2015, seven Utah counties are projected to have more than fifteen percent of their population over sixty-five. And that's true for twenty-six to twenty-nine counties in the state of Utah. And it says Utah will experience dramatic growth in its senior population, so currently they anticipate from 2000 to 2015, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand sixty-five and older people turning sixty-five or older. By 2030, they anticipate that to be at five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, so it's a huge demographic of people that's coming in to that certain age group. And then, lastly, on page sixteen here, let's see, on page six. So it says that the impact on Utah counties due to the sixty-five and older population, and it starts off at the very top of the paragraph, it says many seniors want to retire in place or stay in the homes and communities where they live, or where they have lived most of their lives. And I kinda wanna tie that back in at the end on why I think this is a, I know most city councils and planning commissions get sick of zone changes, as you see a lot of it, but with growth where it is what it is. And so sometimes we try and plan, and we try and stick everybody into a box, but I wanna talk particularly about this demographic and why this is important for this area. So, part of these, the elderly's, is the benefits of this elderly is the volunteering opportunity. So a lot of them are retired, they have time on their hands, there's a high school next door. It also says that seniors are good, a lot of seniors now, if you continue to rating, are not retiring at the age of sixty-five, they're working until seventy-five to eighty because they haven't properly prepared for their retirement. And then it talks about how the elderly, sixty-five to eighty, are a great demographic for employers in the area to hire because of their consistency, their knowledge. But the other thing about this is the elderly, their kids are grown, this goes into say most sixty-five and older, they're either taking care of their current parents and/or getting ready to take care of their current parents, and most of their children are in, either in college or raising their own families. But because of this, there are fewer trips that'll come in and out of the community from a development, from a fifty-five and older development, because you won't have the children. Let's see here. And then, lastly, you know, and I was talking to Dave about this earlier on, and also the DRC, so my father's one of these people who's getting to the point, he is retired, and he and my mom are looking to downsize. So this is this demographic where every twenty-three seconds, someone's turning sixty-five years old, they're looking for a place to live. And this isn't just something in Spanish Fork, but I think all over Utah, we haven't done a very good job on the planning for communities for people of this population. There's multiple different types of centers, right? There's your current, there's starter homes, and you move into your final home where you raise your family, they move out and they wanna go into communities like this, and you go from this to a retirement center, to then an assisted living, so there's multiple scales here. But on this particular one, there is a need for those who are empty-nesters, who wanna live nearby where they raise their families, without being, you know, and I don't wanna, I don't mean this negatively, but a lot of cities will put 'em on the periphery of their city, put 'em downtown, put 'em on the south side, or put 'em away from the nicer part of town. You know, and the nicer part of town always happens to be where the larger lots are, because larger lots are more expensive, therefore, cost more money to build a house on it. So I think in the plan, it makes a lot of sense for this demographic to be able to have a place to live in a good part of town. Springville had, when I was talking to Dave, he had mentioned there was the city council was gonna do a road trip a few years back and go look at the project there on 400 South. I think they did a fantastic job there. I just don't like the location, you know, they're right there by a viaduct, cars coming in every day. I just, I don't see what the issue of having an elderly community, people like my dad's age and thousands of people like my father who need places to live, and they wanna live on the east side or in the good part of town. So that's, you know, we're in an R115 zone, we think we can get it down to the R16 zone. We're talking a difference of two and a half units to the acre to, let's see here, five-point-three units to the acre. We don't need the five-point-three, we need somewhere between four-point-six-six and five-point-oh to do what we wanna do. Also, this is a upscale senior development. If you look at the pictures here, we purposefully did not, we want zero stucco, zero aluminum siding, this will be all hardy boards, some inchless product, stone and/or brick. These aren't the actual final colors that we want, I want more of a modern farm style, some whites, some blacks, some grays, with some colors, and I really want just an upscale community for someone where I could put my own father in it. And so, that's kind of the background, or kind of the way that we came up with the idea. We've owned the property for six, seven, eight years, even before, you know, the overlay zone was put on the area. We've, we have developed projects like this up in Salt Lake, and again, in locations where I don't feel we're the most ideal. I really think these communities won't only be beneficial to the neighborhoods, but it'll change to just only young families, you're gonna have a good demographic of people. And I think that's good planning, it's not bad planning. It's not going to increase the taxes for the people around them because they're not sending their children to school, they're already out of school.
Yeah.
The proximity, I agree with what Dave has said, that the Spanish Fork Parkway is going to be, you know, a very popular used road that's right out in front of our property. Across the street, you got higher density, you know, if you looked at the overall site, like we looked at the applicant before us, and you saw just two fields over, you're gonna see a bunch of townhomes. So we're literally right on that border of where this zone came in. So, you know, I understand that cities have zoning fatigue, but in this particular instance, I really believe this isn't just a product that will, that I, that we wanna do, but I think it's gonna, it'll thrive, and it'll actually bring up the property values around us. So we're looking in the high threes, mid-four, hundred-thousand range for these, these are gonna be very nice, they're not, these are not low-end, and we're willing to stipulate that in our design criteria as well. But I think that's pretty much my points.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and stay there, we'll see if the commissioners have any questions about your Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Mike, could we have you pull up this area again, just one more time, from a bigger perspective? Maybe give us a bigger understanding of that estate zoning area, Dave?
And that is a crawl. So, this is the general plan now. The subject property is located right here.
Okay.
The colors aren't terribly distinct with what we're looking at there, but this slightly more brown kind of a color here, that's to indicate properties that have that estate residential density. The more tan, that's just low-density residential, so the difference between the two ultimately is pretty simple. This likely will develop with twelve-thousand-square-foot lots, and it's likely will develop with fifteen-thousand-square-foot lots.
All of this?
Maybe it's a little bit larger.
Is it all of the brown? All of the brown is estate?
All of the brown is estate, yeah, and that is, you know, plus the general plan's changed.
Okay.
So that's the general plan, and as Mr. Byrd mentioned, we actually have some zoning in place out in this part of the community as well. This yellow color here is the R112 zone, and several of the properties over here with this other, again, kinda hard to distinguish color.
Is that, is that us right there?
That is, yeah. So that is the R115 zone. In fact, we've approved a project adjacent to this project to the east in the R115 zone, it's been a while since we did that. The other property, stellar zone, rural residential, over there on the east side of 2550 East, south of First South.
Mind zooming out and showing the entire general plan of the city, just to get an idea of what we've got overall?
Yeah, just to go back over there.
Maybe you could point out those areas that you did verbally a few minutes ago about the estate areas in town?
Point out the estate areas, and point out also possibly the general plan areas where this currently would fit without having to change anything.
Absolutely. So, obviously, we're talking about this area right here, that's the estate density designation. Then we have properties here, some of these have been developed, some of these are up on the ridge, that's everything in here. And we have a property adjacent to the golf course to the west that also has that estate density designation. And then on the other side of the river bottoms, up on the ridge on the south side, some very south part of the community, same thing there, estate designation. Then the fourth and last area again is Leland, that area where that Leslie Evans Zone Change, it's right in here, so it's part of that area as well. Now for the density that we're talking about, indeed, if we're at five units to the acre, let's just say, certainly anything that we see in the blue color there, we would say that's consistent with development of that density. Anything with the oranges, we have a couple of different oranges that are kinda hard probably as well to distinguish with this image, but likewise, that would accommodate the kind of density we're talking about, as would that area that is designated medium-density residential. Remember, we just looked at that cottages on Fourth Project, it's in that area there, so that density would be consistent with that designation.
Recently, in the river bottoms, we approved a development like this. Whereabout is that on the map?
It's right here, so it's that medium-density designation as well.
It's very similar to this project.
Yeah. Rather, I should say yes. In terms of the density, it's...
That one was brought into the city though with the zones, is that correct? Because it was annexed.
The zoning was assigned with annexation, and incidentally, we approved the plat same time with the annexation, yeah.
So there was no history of that one, would have to be changed or something like that?
No, actually, the general plan had been in place for the properties north of South Lane to be developed at that density, and in fact, immediately adjacent to that, you know, the general plan actually calls for higher density. So, that's right, there was no need to talk about admitting the general plan when that was annexed.
The address, possibly, when this was brought up, when was the general plan last updated and put in place, and what's that process? The thought process that goes into designations for zoning on the general plan?
There, so maybe they're speaking really high level, and it'd probably be helpful just to focus on the last revisions that we did, which I believe was just eighteen months ago, I think it was the fall of 2017. We talked about, and I may be off on that by a little bit, but not a lot, we had considerable discussions about commercial development along Arrowhead Trail, leading out to the Benjamin Interchange in that direction, so that's when some changes were made to intersections, just how we plan for potentially some non-residential development in that area. And it was at that time, I believe as well, that we adopted, the city council adopted the estate residential designation, and that really was done as the result of, again, I'd call them pretty high-level discussions about where might somebody potentially be able to find a lot for a custom home? Where might somebody be able to simply to find a property where you can accommodate, again, a larger home and that type of a thing? Throughout the recession and the years preceding the recession, we really had seen a very, very homogeneous type of development in the community, single-family detached homes on lots that are between probably nine and eleven thousand square feet, and townhomes, and that had been it. We hadn't seen much on the higher-density side of the spectrum, partially because we didn't have zoning in place to allow for that, but also, we weren't seeing developments, you know, for any kind of larger lots at all in the community, which incidentally, I think is something that our city council people received some negative feedback on over time, at least when it filtered down to me, that's who it came from, and it had a negative tone to it, just in terms of, hey, we're seeing our high school classmates and things like that that have lived in Spanish Fork forever, moved to Elk Ridge and Salem and Mapleton, and it's because they can't find what they want in the community. So, not to go overboard, but that was some of the thought process relative to forcing the issue, if you will, by having a designation that would only permit lower-density kind of development. But then at the same time, that's when we adopted the, call it the urban density designation that permits considerably higher density, you know, potentially to accommodate like contemporary apartment projects and that type of thing. At that time, the R4 zone was adopted, for example, and those types of things. So, it was an effort to accommodate, on one end, higher-density development... So, uh, it was an effort to accommodate, uh, on one end, higher density development that would have been permitted before, but also to compel at least potentially some lower density development than what we've been seeing on the other end. And that's really where that estate density came into play.
Nice overview, Dave.
Yeah. It's a lot mouthful, man. It was, that was months and months of discussion, right?
Oh, you did. You condensed it well. Well, uh, the commissioners, commissioners, okay, we'll move into a public hearing and get some input from the community. So, public hearing is open. If there's any comments, please come forward and state your name and...
I'm Jesse Carden. Um, can I have the zoning map? Is that okay? This is the master plan, right? The general plan? Just 'cause it'll help me to gather my thoughts, I think. So we're talking about this property here. And so as was stated before, this property, I believe here, and if I'm misspeaking, please tell me, has already been zoned for that, those bigger estate lots. So rezoning this may or may not affect what's happening there. I don't, I don't know that. Just something to take into consideration. And then the other thing that I was kind of, uh, I was thinking about as Mr. Bird was talking was, he was talking about these two, these properties here. There, I think there's three properties, if I'm not mistaken, that we're talking about here, three different owners of these properties, that sold their, or have sold or are selling their property for this project, with the premise that it was going to be an older community that was being built there. My biggest concern, like I think that that's a great thing. I think we need that housing. It's been, been told to us today that, you know, we need housing for these older, older people, um, or as they become older. If that's politically correct. But, um, my biggest concern is the highness of the density that's being proposed. Cause we're not talking about just a couple of steps. If I, you know, count the zones, you know, step by step down, we're talking R15 to an R6 or an R3, which is, I think, in Spanish Fork zoning is six or seven steps difference, um, which is quite drastic in my opinion. Um, and then also does affect, um, this property here that hasn't sold yet, that's not being talked about. And then, um, and this R15 in this area is fairly new, cause we were here, you know, a few months ago, maybe a year ago, talking about the commercial property that could be in this area. But the city sought fit to change their view on that and possibly go to a little bit more bigger estate area for that. So those are some of the concerns I would want the, the planning commission to take into consideration when, you know, taking in the city's, the city staff's thoughts too, that they're saying, hey, we shouldn't probably go forward with this. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Jesse.
Sorry, it wasn't coming up. Um, my name's Angie and we just live over near that area. And the notice that was sent out, it actually said it was only affecting 8.77 acres and then it grew tonight. I don't know when that changed. Um, and then, so I was just confused on that. I just wanted to know, is there an update on the train, like rerouting the train? I, I'm not sure because that road already gets pretty backed up. So I just wanted to ask the commission if that, like, where you guys are at on rerouting the train? Is it gonna stay there or are they gonna re, have to redo the road? Like, yeah, I don't know.
No, good question. Good question.
So, cause I kinda think that area is affected by that train. Yeah, anyway, sorry. Yeah, I think my biggest concern is just the big picture and what's gonna happen around that area. The plan looks nice, um, as far as having it more. Anyway, yeah. I think I'm just gonna sit down.
No, you're fine, Angie. Uh, could we get staff to maybe comment if they know anything at all about the train crossing and improving that?
Um, I don't have dates. It's on the radar and there's funding for environmental studies to be done. It's still years away. It's 70 plus million dollar projects and so it'll, it'll take some time to get it there, but it is on, on the radar to remove the track, the loops and join it over with the, the other track. And we've had development along the track. It'll just, we're requiring them to give, or trade, buy whatever the land, so then it can be wired for that. So there's, it's going that direction, but given the magnitude, the cost and the kinda low on the priority list of the agencies that we're dealing with, um, I don't see it being an imminent thing.
Okay.
Which is fine. I, yeah, I just wonder how that will impact the road, like how will the roads change? Because in the morning, it backs up really far. People, it takes a long time to get through the lights and things like that. So I would just be curious to see that change and how that would affect too. So.
Okay. Thanks, Angie.
Chairman Tanner, I'm gonna have to excuse myself.
Okay. You was, yeah, you was gonna leave at 6:30. You're late. Thank you for your time tonight, Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Rachel Jacobson. I live in the Edge Development. So yeah, I was here at those meetings, you know, a year or so ago about some of the land being proposed to change to commercial. Um, I think the, the senior housing, um, does look really nice. I would be also concerned, concerned with, yeah, how many people are getting fit in there. And like Greg Barrett said, you know, it would be nice to have, um, older people come and live in a community that is, you know, that got that quiet feel and everything. So looking towards the future, does that mean that we're not going to ever try to change the land next to it, like behind the Edge Development to commercial? Like would that help or would that down the road increase the chances that it would be? Because that is my concern, that I don't ever want to change to commercial. And so, yeah, I'm wondering what they're thinking, um, if that is something they're gonna try to push for in the future.
When you say they?
I don't know. Like the planning?
Planning commission?
Talking about this property here and the one that they brought up in the past?
Uh-huh. Or is that for sure, like?
It's all up to the landowners. They can come back to the city anytime they want.
And then bring it up again?
Bring it up again, as often as it wants, as far as I understand.
That's true.
Okay. But yeah, I mean, if they're saying they want a quieter feel and there was a commercial that came in, like I, I don't know if that would be a horrible thing. But yeah, how many people would be fit into that? Was that answered? Like?
Yeah, it's, um, there would be, it's between 42 and 60.
Units?
Yeah. Yeah, between the two and three. We own the two and the three. So 42, I'm wanting control. We've been working with someone on the other, which will make it a total of 60.
Okay. Thanks, Rachel. Anyone else from the public that would like to tell us your concerns?
I'm Jenny Martino. So again, I'm a Edge homeowner as well. So we were here, what, 18 months ago, two years ago about the commercial. So, um, little research on you as well. You have, you have great plans. Are they going to stay one level or, I would think so with the 55 community? Basements included or just all one level?
So they're all one level. We, we've got options if they wanted to put like, uh, underneath a garage, like a little area where they can have storage.
Okay.
You know, a little basement. Or they could have like, these are 10, 12, 12, 12 roof pitches where they might have a little space about a garage. So if they had grandkids over, they could get a little bit, obviously they don't wanna, everything's main level living, so no.
Well, I say that because my mom lives with me. She's 77 years old.
Yeah, so you know.
And I built my house accordingly so that she would have every, all the access to everything on the main level.
And that's how these are designed.
Okay. Um, I also heard you say that they wanted to kinda be removed from things, a little more quiet area. That's a very busy area with the high school right there. Angie mentioned that, and both Rachel mentioned, that that road gets backed up, 2550. I still call it 2550, sorry. With the high school kids, it does get backed up quite a bit. It is a busier road. And the mere fact that the city changed it to Spanish Fork Parkway two years ago when we were here, you indicated then, they, no, maybe you or someone else, that that is going to become a main thoroughfare all the way into Provo someday. So just, that's a concern. And the, the other concern, um, is I know that you also do commercial building as well. You have very nice structures down there in Vineyard Warham area. I just don't want big out there. I don't think big structures like the ridges across Highway 6 is an appropriate thing for our necks, neck of the woods. And I mean, it's just across Highway 6. But where that is more of a single level, or not single level, but single family home kind of structures over there, it should stay that way. When we built our homes there, we were told, yes, that's the plan. This is what it, we foresee in the next 10, 15 years going to is, um, single family homes in this area. So that's just my concern of, we're, we're moving to medium density. How close are we going to high density after that slash commercial with it? Cause we definitely don't want the commercial, fought that two years ago.
Yeah.
And we'll keep fighting it. But that's just a concern. I, I'm not opposed to the 55. I think the buildings themselves look great and I think it'll be a great community. And despite what we seem like, we really are nice people. We'll, we'll. Yeah, that's just a concern on my part.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. No other comments? Okay. We are gonna close the...
Can I respond to a couple of these?
Yes. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Why don't you go ahead and, uh, respond to those? Give you, uh, three minutes. How's that?
Well, first, thank you. I wish, so Provo City, and I, I, there's parts of how Provo City does developments that I like and parts that I don't, but we're in neighborhoods in Provo City. So before I bring developments in Provo City, I go meet with the neighborhood chair who then goes and talks to the little neighborhoods. And, and I, I like it because I get the feedback from the citizens that it will be affected in the immediate property. So I do appreciate you guys coming out. And so I, I think I heard, uh, from some of your concerns here, as far as commercial, but I had no idea commercial development was ever being proposed in this area. I know on the other side of the tracks where Ridge Point is, there's the Walmart. But I, I didn't know, we have no intention, I, I don't think it's a good fit here personally. But, uh, I think it's one of the most beautiful parts of the, all Spanish Fork. So as far as commercial development, we, I do a ton of commercial, but this is completely residential. We have no, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna have any desire to do that. You mentioned, are these gonna be single level or two-story? We are and we would stipulate to single level ramblers, uh, with the ability in the, the roof pitch to be able to do like a bonus space.
It's, it's similar, it won't be higher.
So ramblers is what we want. We're also going to fence, you know, around our property. So it's, we, we're, we're gonna fence in our, our, our property. I don't, when I said I, my main concern about, uh, wanting something on the east side of town was, is mainly for my dad. But, you know, as far as quiet, I, I wasn't meaning, we got a high school next door. So there's nothing that we're going to be able to do or the townhomes just next to the high school with itself. The traffic will never be able to be as great as what the high school football games will be. Or auditoriums, that, it's always gonna happen. And then the Walmart that just got built off of Spanish Fork Parkway, that's just generating traffic flow from people all the way around.
They're in a, in a 10 mile perimeter almost coming there.
Or, or a three mile perimeter, sorry. So I, I'm not as, I, you know, I, I do agree that 2550 would be a really bad spot to have an estate lot where the traffic is going to be coming. I think that, uh, our fence around our property will still make ours a, a nice community for the, the demographic we're looking for. So as far as the train and traffic, again, uh, our community will, even if I was in an, uh, an R, the R1, let me see. R115 zone, the R115 zone's 2.15 units to the acre. My, uh, another gentleman was talking, we're, we're only looking to go to an R16, not an R13. And the R16 says 5.37 units to the acre. We actually only need 4.6 to five. We don't need more than that. So we're not looking to go 6, 8, 10, 12. We, we need between 4.6 units to the acre to five, which would put us right in the R16 zone. But I believe that the, uh, units that we have will have fewer trips out of here. Just the average household in Utah has three children. So when you think of dance, sporting events, club events, those trips, you know, a lot of you have children, you're gonna be running in and out of a lot. We're gonna be, this community as far as traffic, now, it's funny to talk traffic cause we are on a road that's gonna be a heavy traffic user, when schools in session, football games, baseball games. That traffic is coming regardless of where you're not. But I do believe that, uh, our residents here will be using the roads less than all the neighborhoods around us, whether we're in this zone or the zone you, you're currently in.
Okay. I have you wrapped it up. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Commissioners, any discussion, uh, comments about what this is zoned now versus what this proposal is?
I'll make a bit of a comment and that is that if I wasn't here as a commissioner, when the last, uh, master plan was developed and, and, uh, the zoning areas were proposed and things like that. However, it wasn't that long ago that they were designated. And, uh, they're designated that way because we're running out of room for those kinds of developments. This is on the far, far east side of Spanish Fork City. The railroad tracks are the, are the boundary on the east. As we look at the east bench, it's filling up rapidly. The properties that are not, uh, owned by developers, a lot of them are under contract to developers. These zones have been created to try and, uh, alert everyone of what the plan is in those areas. I am an example of someone that had to hunt for a lot where I could build a custom home. And believe me, there aren't a lot of developments in Spanish Fork in general that offer a lot that isn't a lot that's already included by the developer. In other words, the developer wants to build the home and the developer wants you to build one of his homes and here's the 12 lot, here's the 12, uh, uh, options you have. And it's harder and harder to find somewhere where you can go and say, I have an architect. I have a home, the custom home. I want more than a two-car garage. I want a little larger lot. And, uh, when we talk about the older population, I R1, maybe the oldest one in the room. And I have no, I have no desire to move out of my home. I may someday, but at 66, I'm not looking to move anywhere. I think out of respect for the people who have made these decisions prior to me and out of respect to the plan that exists here now, uh, I think that these developments are very, uh, much in demand and we've already approved one of these developments in the past 12 months. The placement of it is a little bit irrelevant in that there are places on the east side where the zoning would allow this. I think that the road that this abuts, uh, is a busy road, but that doesn't have a concern to me. It's more the precedent that it sets. All of the land around this development would continue to be, uh, in our, uh, our, uh, our estate density residential. Uh, I, I think that this would detract from that zone that's been proposed for this area. And so as such, uh, I don't see, uh, I have no, no problem with the development, the design, the look, the feel. But I don't think that it belongs in this zone. I think that it's been extremely clear as to what this zone is. I'm not trying to say that this... clear as to what this zone is. I'm not trying to say that this project isn't a valuable project that couldn't be built. And I definitely don't want to say that it can't be built on the east side. All I'm saying is that the planners that came before me, those that discussed and designated these zones, did it with a lot of thought, a lot of preparation. And they did it with the insight that they had from experience, as well as with a lot of input from the neighbors that were already there. And so my inclination is to vote against the proposal for those reasons. Not against the development, not against anything like that, but I think that the zoning is clear, and I would prefer to leave the zoning as it is. And my vote would be to go against the project.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. Any other commissioners have any comments that you want to make about it?
Yeah, just real quick, I've been trying to go through the map of the general plan of the city. And when you really look at it, there are quite a few undeveloped properties that are still farmland that are in the general plan for estate, state housing all around the river bottoms. This one, we've got down, down on the Benjamin Road. But I don't see a lot of undeveloped property that's zoned or general plan zoned for anything other than estate. Everything in the general plan that's got a non-state zoning is already pretty much developed. And so with that being said, I think it's going to be difficult without changing an estate zoning somewhere to be able to get this kind of, this kind of a development in the city, in my honest opinion. Not to say that I think we should approve it. I think more research needs to be done in designating, trying to locate where could this specific type of development be built in the city as of right now without knocking down existing homes or changing something. Is there anywhere in the general plan where this, where somebody could just walk in and start developing something like this? So I think that's something we need to kind of address in the future and bring up in a future meeting.
Can we pull up the zoning map again instead of looking up? Can you zoom it out so we So several years ago, there was a large amount of, and there still is, a large amount of townhome requests. Large amounts. Enough that it concerned many of the planning commissioners with everything assuming to be townhomes in Spanish Fork. And I would say things have changed a bit. There's been a lot of development of the R112 recently, and we've seen that, a ton of changes as far as that development, especially on the east side of, or the north side of Highway 6. But at that time, there wasn't any type of estate opportunities. They didn't exist, as you already mentioned. And so concern was, before everything's just taken over, let's look at areas where we could set aside and hope that in the future, there would be that opportunity for that kind of development. Time moves forward, things start playing out, you can start seeing the changes that take place. And of course, that's why developers will come and bring up ideas. This might fit in this area. It might, but it might not be today. Commercial, like you said, it can come back. They can come back and say, hey, does it fit now? And a new planning commission in a new time might decide, sure. But it wasn't that point when that came up. It wasn't the right fit. So you could be right. Further research may be needed. But right now, the idea of putting that there is putting a zone as an island in the middle of an R15 area. That makes no sense. It's not in the general plan. It makes zero sense to make that decision. Is that demographic going to grow in number? Yep. Go talk to any sociologist and any healthcare professional, any of them, and they're going to tell you, yep. And it's going to be a huge problem that everyone's going to need to take care of. But right now, we have two developments that have been approved, not just one, because there was an area behind ShopCo that we approved. What happened to that?
It's still in process.
Okay. But we have approved two areas, and it has been on the planning commission's a topic of, we wanted to invite those types of developments into Spanish Fork. When we went and saw the one in Springville, we were like, wow, this is awesome. We want these developments in Spanish Fork. We want to be proactive and ahead of the game in that area. But right now, two of those have been approved in the area, in Spanish Fork. And so I don't think that Spanish Fork's behind the times. I think Spanish Fork's being proactive about it. And perhaps at some point, with enough research and overtime depth, who knows? Maybe that will be the place for it. But right now, it would just be an island in the middle of a zone that's not, it wasn't planned for that at this point. And so I, I'm going to, you know, in the direction of, it's not the right fit right now. It's not the right fit for that zone based on the direction and the perception of what the city's planning.
Okay, thank you. Dave, can you follow up a little bit with Kevin's concern about where could we put this?
Yeah.
Because I kind of felt like you presented maybe a lot of opportunities, and maybe Mr. Euler doesn't see them, or maybe, let's make some clarity of that. Where can these go? I think everybody's in agreements that we need to have places for this moving forward proactively.
Without buying up a bunch of homes?
Yeah, redevelopment, you're saying?
Redevelopment, which is difficult to do.
Uh huh. There is not a lot of property available today in Spanish Fork for any kind of residential development, but particularly for anything from probably like a four-unit to the acre and above, we could just say, kind of development. Not necessarily by accident in all candor as well. The opportunities are limited. There is property on the market today in the community that I think frankly, staff would recommend be zoned for something above four units to the acre. But I think you're absolutely right. Those opportunities are few and far between. Things will change when we have some infrastructure capabilities out on the west side of town that I think are forthcoming but don't exist today. But even with that, I mean, you could, and this would probably be an exercise, I think, that's worth taking some time to consider. We've done things similar to this in the past, to where we'll just throw some maps together and show you what properties have yet to be developed and what we have those planned for. And we can run some calculations relative to units per acre, and maybe just kind of provide some scenarios to consider relative to what our current plan ultimately will result in if it's followed. But also, as a part of that, we could see, you know, where most likely a project like this could be approved. But again, the opportunities, they are limited without a doubt.
We just annexed a piece of property on South Main Street just before you go into Salem. What, I don't remember what we annexed that as with the zone that we brought that in.
The applicant's requested commercial, if it's the one I'm thinking of.
No, we only did a piece of it commercial. Because we were going to do, I talked about maybe doing more of a commercial. We decided to limit it to just the corner commercial. I can't remember what we did the rest of.
And annexation was withdrawn.
Was it withdrawn?
Oh, you're thinking of the one further to the south. That's right. You're thinking, I was thinking, sorry, of one right in here, but you're, Woodland Hills Drive, right? Yeah, that's right. They anticipated some, some commercial development there at that intersection. That partly was their motivation to request to have an annexation approved. They'll be back, and I think there's any doubt about that. But, in fact, I would say, just from kind of a land use pattern, the kind of density that we're talking about, typically we would try to incorporate that into an area maybe that does have some non-residential development and that sort of thing. And I think that's distinct from what the applicant's kind of described about this area and why he thinks it's a good fit here. And again, I don't think anybody's going to complain as a neighbor, you know, for having this development next door. So I'm certainly not saying that. But just from a density perspective generally, you would want to see the higher densities in an area where maybe you're adjacent to some non-residential uses and that kind of a thing. I don't know how much that helps, but land scarcity in town today is an issue.
It surprises me to hear that there's really not much out there for this type of a development. That really surprises me. Where in comparison, this estate properties, there's quite a few. There's three big areas right now for estates. And yet, this type of a project that's not only needed now, but it's going to be needed more and more in the future, I think it definitely ought to be on our radar as a commission to explore that and find places for it. It's going to be my suggestion. Things change, like Commissioner Tag mentioned, you know. I remember when this came up with the estates, it was a very powerful subject that we had a lacking of it. And so it got addressed, right? It got earmarked. And it seems like this is a project too, that we need to kind of keep on our radar to find a home for it. Because Spanish Fork will need three or four of these projects in town in the next 10, 15 years.
Numbers may suggest, you know, if we're talking about 60 units, the numbers probably suggest quite a bit more than that.
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, that's been a surprise to me to hear that there really isn't many spots for a home for this. And it's a great project. You've got some great drawings and love the concept with the wall enclosed. And I like the concept of it. It looks good. We was very impressed with the one in Springville. We drove by it several times on field trips. So anyway, put that on our agenda to be digging into this. Do you guys agree that we need to, we need to follow up on this?
At least research it and try and find out.
Before we take action?
Yeah, no.
I don't know about action, but definitely is an assignment.
I think that it's a great idea to take a look at these different places. And if there was a large area of contiguous land that wanted to have a zone change, I think that that's perfectly appropriate to do that. But I don't think an island approach, or, you know, in this case, something that's been designated for a long time. The applicant mentioned that he's owned the property for seven years or so. Well, then he must have been following what was going on here and what this zoning was. And so in this particular case, I think that we're prepared to vote on it. But I do agree that it's a great idea to take a look at these other places and make some of those areas available, or at least give a, you know, make a tool available that would allow that kind of development to happen. We've got a lot of area that is this, and like you said, in different designations, but we do have a lot of undeveloped property in Spanish Fork. And so as we grow, I would expect that you're going to have a lot of requests for zone changes.
Well, I don't feel like I have a shortage in the past.
You'll have more, not less.
Right. I mean, it, and that's just given the way we're set up.
Right, yeah.
Every development that you see will be accompanied with a zone change request. That's...
Yeah. And I would fully support that kind of a study to, you know, determine how that type of a designation would take place, in what area and in what amount of ground that we're talking about that's going to be designated. And of course, we would also want to take into consideration the neighboring properties and what they want.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see a map of all undeveloped properties and what they're currently zoned in the general plan, if that's possible.
Let's give that to Mike.
Mikey will do it.
I love to delegate.
Mikey.
Okay.
I agree. I think, so, in fact, if any other things come to mind for any of you, shoot us an email. But I've really appreciated the discussions that we've had in the past that have been along those lines. Our long-range planning documents frankly are really simple. Having a general plan that's 20 pages of text, and a map that generally speaking is, again, it's simple, but also there is some inherent flexibility built into it and things like that. You know, those are the result of a lot of lengthy discussions we've had with you guys over the years and looking at exactly what you're describing, and you may be looking as well at what some of the anticipated demand might be relative to how our population's changing, and maybe comparing that with our existing housing supply, and maybe the trend on how our housing supply in the community's changed. Just with the kind of construction that we've seen in the last few years, I think, I love that kind of stuff. So I mean, I'd love to do a deep dive with you guys to explore that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave. Commissioners, is there a feeling to make a motion?
I will make a motion that the Greg Byrd general plan amendment request be denied at this time.
A second? Motion in a second. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
opposed? I believe that's it for tonight, unless you're going to bring us another action item.
That's all we have. No, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here and adjusting your schedules to make sure we had a quorum. I'll send an email, if not tonight, in the morning, to talk about, you know, a date that maybe avoids spring break in April, and maybe get a date solidified for a joint meeting sometime towards the end of March.
You want to just do that through email then? And, yeah, okay.
So if you guys don't mind checking your calendars in the next couple of days. Getting things set with you sometimes is a challenge. You go a lot of different directions and have a lot going on. And when we add the city council to the mix, it's just that much more of a challenge. That joint meeting might be a little tricky to pull together, but I think that'll be, that'll be a busy night.
Were we going to try and get a work session with the city council and staff before then?
I'm thinking end of March for that. So the 26th or 28th, so that would be before your next meeting.
Prior to.
Exactly. And I think it's important. So that's why the timing's even more important to find dates in a certain window than work.
Yep.
I've got to say this as well. You guys know that Tracy's been on the planning commission. She's three meetings away from completing six years.
I knew I was close.
And we haven't had a lot of commissioners over the years that have done it. So maybe put that into perspective. First of all, Tracy does not miss meetings. It's very, very rare that she misses meetings.
Ooh, I've been here.
And in addition to that, you know, sometimes we have more than one meeting a month. Tracy's been to the trainings that we've had with the League of Cities and Towns, American Planning Association.
All that good.
And Tracy...
It's what led me to my master's degree program. I'm so excited about it.
And not every planning commissioner will say that when they get to the end of six years, right? This is amazing. But how many years did you spend on the recreation committee?
Yeah, I'm...
Long time.
My saddest thing, I have to be honest, my saddest thing is I have a plaque from the recreation department as volunteer of the year for Spanish Fork City. And I'm like, oh, that's so sad.
So Tracy, thank you. It has not been a small amount of time, six years. That's 70 or so planning commission meetings, maybe a few more, plus all of the other things.
Field trips and work sessions.
Yeah. So again, we can, if you ever need anything, anyone will find us.
Well, thanks.
That's it for me. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dave.
Well, get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have...
Second.
We have adjourned.